I'd like to ask knee Jackson if he would come up and do the invocation. While he makes his way up, if everyone could silence their cellphone or turn them off, I would appreciate that.
Shall we bow for prayer? Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, Lord, we come to you, Lord, first of all, just thanking you so much for this and another day of life you've given us. Lord, we thank you so much for an opportunity to be able to come, dear Lord, and to be able to help the people of our county. Lord, I pray that you be with everyone present, dear Lord, all these families that are represented. Lord, I pray that you be with all those who have been affected by the flooding, those who have lost their homes, those who have lost loved ones. Lord, we just pray that you give them a special comfort as only you can. Lord, I pray that everything that's said and done, dear Lord, it will be done in a way to be pleasing unto you. Lord, I just pray that you watch over the people of Pike County, all those leaders, dear Lord, and that everyone would have you first and foremost in their focus. Would we just ask these things in your precious and holy name? Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Robertson?
Here.
Commissioner Tackett?
Commissioner Booth?
Here.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Mr. Eddie Crum if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, whose republic stands one nation unforgotten, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the July 25th, 2022, and August 9th, 2022 meetings of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve? A motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? See, no, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. First item on the agenda is discussion of the purchase of additional voting machines and potential action. We have Eric County Clerk here. Rhonda, would you like to come up? And I'm not sure who else from the Board of Elections would like to come up. Marie? Jennifer? Eddie? This was an issue that came before the court here a few weeks ago about trying to open some additional voting centers. And there were some issues about the cost that we discussed. So you have the floor, and whoever, feel free to proceed.
Well, we've provided the court with packets that has information. We have added six additional voting locations. That will be vote centers. If you guys approve to purchase the equipment to stock it.
What would the six additional centers be?
It's 200.
Where would they be located?
Okay. They will be at Hurricane, Lower Johns Creek, Henry Clay, the Blackberry Hog Trial Cabin, the Blackberry Community Center, and Lower Big Creek. Altogether, we would have 23 voting locations on Election Day, not including our early voting, in-person absentee, and our mail-in absentee.
And what is the cost of the additional equipment and the maintenance for the equipment moving forward?
If you look at the page next to the back of your packet, $249,954 is the price to add the additional equipment. The maintenance fee is on the back. The first two years, there is no fee for maintenance. Third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth year, it is $32,749 per year.
So roughly $196,000 and change, just looking at it on the maintenance.
How much did you say?
Somewhere around the $196,000 is what it looks like.
Probably close. I don't have a grand total on it, if anyone wants to add it up.
Is there any kind of grant money or anything that we can get to recover or defray part of the cost of this?
There is. We discussed it in the last time we come before the court. There's going to be $25 million that will be available. They'll have two sweeps, 12.5 each sweep. And Pike County is eligible for some reimbursement funding. The amount, the state doesn't know. I see where you're being reimbursed for the last purchase, which we had estimated it to be around $125,000 that you'd get back. But you got back more than that. You got back $142,500. So the equipment purchased from last time should have equaled out to a little bit over $108,000. Now, I don't know how much you'll get back on the next reimbursement, but you, we are eligible. And I am just assuming, but, you know, assuming don't get you anywhere. But I'd say it'll be comparable.
Because this 142.5 was from that grant, is that correct, Frankie? From the program? This was not from the state? This was from that Voting America or? Right, but it was paid by? So was it the State Board of Elections that paid the 100, or was it through this grant?
It was HAVA money that was available. This is a different type of money that, this is available through the state itself. I guess it's federal money, maybe?
So, so let me go back. The money, the first round of money when we bought the first voting machines, that was a federal grant that was made available. I'm not sure how it flowed, if it flowed through the state, but there was some kind of program.
HAVA. It's like Americans with Disability type group.
But we got reimbursed through, is that the program we got reimbursed through?
Yes.
Okay. So it really wasn't state money, but it flowed through the state?
Well, I'm not really sure if the state matched it, or I'm not, I don't know the ins and outs of how they come up with their money, but.
The big, the big, the question on this other 25 million, though, I think you had said that the first 12 and a half million was gone, correct?
Most of it. They said they will have some left over, but they don't know how much.
I mean, because if you, if you start talking about 12 million a year, you're talking, 120 counties, you're talking about 10,000 bucks a county.
Not all counties are eligible for it because they've already purchased their equipment. These are only for counties that haven't purchased all the equipment that they supposedly need.
What do we need to do to seek reimbursement from that 25 million?
It's the same procedure, pretty much, as what we did before. We'll keep you updated, make sure you get the forms filled out.
The Commissioners want to bring, discuss this, or have anything else they want to add on it?
Judge, too. It still, it still leads all precincts that you can vote, neither, any one of them, right? Wrong?
They will be vote centers. And I'd like to, again, clear up a little misunderstanding that's circulating out there. On social media, it says that I asked for, or the board, or myself, or whoever, asked for equipment for 57 precincts. And we did, but we didn't get that. We didn't get funded for that. It was turned down. And people think that all 57 precincts should be open because we asked for 57 places to be stocked with voting machines. But we don't have that. And that will clear up a little bit of confusion while we don't have 57 actual physical locations open. As far as the 57 precincts, we still have those, but we've just combined them into these vote centers. So you can, each vote center has 57 precincts on every machine that you'll go into voting. So that's why they're vote centers. You can go into any location and vote. You don't have to go to your primary home precinct. And it makes it really convenient for a lot of people. And, you know, there's some people that don't like it, and some that do, but it is, it is headed in that direction. And, you know, we want to be ahead of the curve and keep up with technology with the rest of the state and the rest of the nation. We don't want to be left behind. I feel like, you know, us as a board, we want to serve everybody to the best of our abilities and keep them up there where we need to be. We don't want to be ashamed on Election Day over that we don't add up to other places.
There's, there's something I want to clear, I need to clear up, is you had indicated that, that you had asked, or you all had asked for voting machines for 57 precincts?
Yeah.
When was that?
The last time we come in here.
I don't, I didn't, I didn't take it that you all asked for that many, but there was a quote for that many?
Yes.
I don't remember there being a request from the Board of Elections to open all 57?
Well, that's what the, the quote was for, to get all 57 of them open.
For the equipment?
Yes.
And it was over somewhere around the million dollars?
It was very expensive, very expensive.
And I think there was some, some concern, Jennifer, if I remember correctly, about not even being able to find enough poll workers to put 57. Is that a fair statement?
I think with the six additional that we're asking to open, and that's 24 poll workers, and that's 12 for Marie and 12 for me, and I think that's doable.
You know, I guess the point, I'm, I'm going to take exception, is I don't want somebody saying the fiscal court's the reason we don't have 57 polling places. I mean, the first time that this came before the court, the Board of Elections asked us to give, you know, to buy election equipment, and you all gave us a list, and we bought it. Is that a fair, is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Nobody asked us to open 57 precincts at that time.
Not at that time.
And then you came as a guest of some of the Commissioners at the last court meeting.
They, they approached us and wanted us to open up all 57 precincts.
And then, but my, my request, my question is, was that request made by the Board of Elections to open all 57, or was that just to give information and a quote on what it would cost?
Well, it was, it was at our request after we were contacted by the Commissioners to, they asked us to open them, so we got together and we come up with a plan, and we submitted it to you guys.
And if you opened all 57, you wouldn't be able to have, you would, you'd have to vote in your own precinct, is that correct?
Yes and no. I mean, it could get more expensive if we turned those 57 into vote centers, but it is doable.
Because I did not take it, you know, that, you know, I think the word was that I asked at the last meeting, what it would cost to buy the equipment to open all of the voting, Eddie, I think the, the quote from the gentleman from HARP was, it was an outrageous amount of money to do that. Quote, unquote, outrageous amount of money. You know, I know that there are some people who are inconvenienced by it, but, you know, I'm concerned over the cost of it. One of the issues on the maintenance is, under this plan, it was $32,749 a year. I'm thinking that under the, the original voting machines that we bought, it was $16,905. Is that? Well, I mean, if we're going to talk about this, can you, you're, you're the salesman from HARP. I think the taxpayers need to understand exactly what's going on, because I'm not sure that I do. We bought voting equipment for all 17 of the voting centers, is that correct?
Yes.
And the cost of that was $248,534. Does that, does that sound about right?
It was $250,534, I think.
Okay. So I was two grand off. But now, we're going to add six more sites. For 17, it costs 250. Add six more sites, it's going to cost another 250,000. And then the maintenance cost is doubled. Can, can you explain that to me?
It's adding more ADA devices, the handicapped accessible devices, as well as more print devices. The print-on-demand devices weren't part of the original contract, and now you're looking at ordering enough to supply all the vote centers with those print-on-demand devices. So none of those were ordered originally with the first round.
So the print-on-demand would be where you're voting in any precinct, they can print your ballot on demand?
Correct. And for them, for the, for the last election, ordering ballots for that many vote centers is, is a nightmare. Because you don't know where people are going to go vote. You might open 18 centers, and everybody might go vote at the same center. And you don't have enough ballots at that center, you've got them distributed around the county. So the print-on-demand solution allows you to basically not order any ballots, or just emergency ballots. And then you just print the ballot as the voter comes in.
And then what about the maintenance cost doubling?
So the, and I'm not exactly, that's not my department as far as how that's just, how that's figured out. The President actually sat down and figured out that amount. But the print-on-demand devices are two pieces of equipment, so it's an additional printer along with the, the voting device. So it's going to be a little more expensive on us as far as maintenance goes. And you also have to realize, you guys are the only county in the state now that we're doing this maintenance agreement and billing with. So this is pretty new to us. All the other 96 counties that we do work on a, a break fix. So if there's, if there's nothing wrong with your voting equipment, we don't charge you anything. So we're basically, this is new to us. We're ensuring all this voting equipment, that we don't know what the cost is going to be as well. So, you know, we're basing this maintenance equipment on Pike County. This is the first, the first county we've done this with.
We've got so much equipment.
So is this, is this a guaranteed flat? That we pay you $32,000 a year regardless of how much equipment needs maintenance? Or is it up to that amount?
It's, that's based on the number of pieces of equipment that you will own as a whole with the, the original purchase plus this new purchase.
So that's a flat fee we pay no matter if there's work to be done or not?
Right. If you have 10 voting machines that won't work after this election, then we've got to come in and repair all 10 of those at no cost.
Well, I mean, because we're already paying $16,000 for the original equipment. Is this $32,000 for all the equipment?
That would include the new.
Or is it just the new pieces of equipment?
No, that includes everything. This would, this would be the, the final flat contract that included all maintenance for your current equipment that's been delivered, plus this new equipment that would be delivered.
So it's a revised maintenance contract to cover the existing equipment and the new equipment?
Correct.
Right in like 105 additional pieces of equipment.
And Greg may be able to expand on this better, but I, but I think even with this contract and these prices, it's probably still less than you've paid in the past for your combined election services from us.
All right. Is there a motion by any member of the court, or any discussion by any member of the court on this issue?
Motion.
Motion for?
Purchase the?
Purchase?
On the voting machines.
Just to purchase the, the voting machines as set out on the quote we have here?
Yes.
As well as the revised maintenance agreement?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any question or discussion on this issue?
You go, Eddie. Maybe in the future, we can open up more of them as we go, you know? That'd be the main thing. Well, this would give us a start.
There may be additional, who knows, two or three years down the road, there might be more money available. We can add more. I think that this is a good call on your all's part for the 23 that we are going to be having, the 23 locations. You've got a map in your packet that, and this will be available for anybody that wants to look at it, where the locations are going to be marked on a map. And we pretty much have got most of the county covered as far, I mean, it's not in anybody's, everybody's back door, but it's accessible and people will be able to get to it. And of course, we're going to have the early voting, the in-person absentee, and the mail-in voting. And while I might, I don't want to just touch base for just a minute, because I want, not just me, but the board itself, I'm sure I'm speaking for them also, that we want the citizens, you know, Pike County to feel confident, you know, in their vote, that it's secure. And when they come out to the polling places, we got a lot of checks and balances in place because, you know, election integrity seems to be a hot topic right now. We just want everybody to know that, you know, when our elections are over, we send all of our reports to a grand jury, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, you know, they conduct that, and we've always got good reports back. We don't have any violations. The Attorney General comes out on Election Day. Even at early voting, they send somebody out to observe and see what's going on, and we, we pass that with flying colors. We've got bipartisan support all the way around, regardless of what people say. Our poll workers, they're bipartisan. We have Democrats and Republicans. Our Board of Elections, we have Democrats and Republicans. And even in my own election department, the girls that I have working there, bipartisan. We have, we have Republicans and we have Democrats. So we want everybody to know that as far as what we do, we, we've got their back. We, their vote is secure. There's no wrongdoing that's ever come to anybody's attention. Our, our machines from HARP here, they're not, they're not connected to the internet, so there's a lot of rumors about things being connected to the internet. Our machines are tested for, for accuracy, and they come out good every time. They recently had a recount in one of the other counties, and the results were spot on, spot on. Everything that the, the totals from Election Night, when they recounted, was exactly the same, you know? And if anybody's got any questions regarding elections, or anything that the board can do, give us a call. If you can't, you know, if you don't want to call us, you can call the State Board of Elections, you can call the Secretary of State's office. Regardless, we're all here to serve. And I want to leave the people in the county with one little bit of advice. Please, you need to get out and vote on May the 8th. Because these 23 voting locations, they're very crucial. They're very crucial to getting things done in our county, and it's crucial to everything that we do. And if you don't show up at one of these places and vote, shame on you. It's important. People who, you know, we, our veterans have given their lives so we can have privileges like this, and, and we just want to sit back and yak and yak about it. It's important. Go vote. Regardless of how you vote, you need to vote. So I'm going to leave it with that. So I'm going to take that as this passed, and we can submit this plan on to the, to the Board of Elections.
Reggie, you have a question?
Go ahead.
What was the question?
It would depend on which, which machines we're talking about. Five? Five? Yeah. Correct. For the print-on-demand, yeah.
Your turn.
That about right? Yeah. And you all do have different pricing, but yeah, 58.75.
$152,750.
Sorry. Five and a half.
So basically, it would be five printers or five machines. It's not a lot, really, out of, out of what we're looking at. The first two years are, are covered by warranty.
Correct.
They're correct. Okay, that's all I got, Judge. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other question or discussion? See, no, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
I'm going to vote yes, but I do have some reservations about this.
What, what are your reservations, Judge?
My reservations are probably too long for this meeting, but I know we need some additional voting centers. But I'm going to reserve my comments till a later point. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item, is there anybody here from the Conservation District? Come on up, Brian. Brian, you have the floor, sir. Please proceed.
Thank you, Judge, for your time today, and thank you for the court's time. I need some approvals on some items that are in your all's packets, one of which the first thing would be our tax rate for next year, or for this year. It's upcoming. There should be a property tax rate request in there. We did not change our tax rate. We neither raised or lowered. It's the same as it's been since the beginning.
Gotcha. So you need a motion to acknowledge receipt, the tax rate from the Pike County Conservation District. Is there a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion? See, no, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Brian, you, please proceed, talking about some of the programs that the Conservation District offers.
Yeah. The second thing that I needed you all to acknowledge- Yeah, the second thing that I needed you all to acknowledge is the annual report that's in there for last year. And it covers this year as well. Uh the first thing is list of all the board members. We did lose Matt this year, Matt will not be returning as a board member. I think we have a new board member that'll be coming onto the board sometime this fall. Um I'm not going to read this to you all, I know that you all can look at it and review, but I did want to talk about a couple of things. We did start the Junior Conservation Board this year. It's made up of high school students from several of the county high schools. It's open to any county high school, but uh we have members right now from Pikeville High School, Shelby Valley, Belfry and Pike Central. They've been doing a lot of work this year, uh they've been building raised garden beds at the assisted living. They've been doing learning days with kids that are out in the county and actually hosted the learning days there at the Conservation District. The other thing I wanted to talk about was a new program which is called CAIP. That's from the state agricultural folks. That's open to any landowner in Pike County. It's a set amount of funds that we receive every year. This year, the beekeepers have taken a lot of advantage of it to buy beekeeping supplies, hives. Also for like fencing and equipment that they can use. Also for um, this is a little odd, but the program actually covers jars if you're a beekeeper to buy jars for honey. Or if you're a producer to buy jars for jelly jam or anything else you want. And even including labels or printers to print them on or paper. It's a little unusual, it's a new program that's been open to Pike County this year. Um the other thing I wanted to talk about, we have an appliance buyback coming up. Lisa's been working with solid waste. It will be at the same watts it was at last year. Last year, we took in right around nine hundred and I want to say ten or fifteen appliances. We did receive another environmental grant for that, for this year. The environmental grant doesn't cover all the cost of it, but it covered a portion of it. And then the Conservation District made up the rest. Um she really likes working with the solid waste program. They've been great every year. Hopefully it'll go well this year too. We're expecting that we may have a lot more people bringing in junk appliances this year because of flooding or what have you, but she's prepared for it. And we have a hate workshop coming up this fall, working with the Extension Service as well. The communication for both are going out now. So you'll see that on Facebook and on the district's page and in the newspaper too.
The uh, I just want to comment, the appliance buyback program is an excellent, excellent program. Best nine hundred appliances that may not end up over a hill or in a creek.
In the creek, yeah.
Uh we greatly appreciate the Conservation District's work on that.
Those are through an environmental grant and we actually applied for another one. And we're going to work over the course of the next year. So we may need some of the fiscal court's help with, we're going to apply for an environmental grant for tire removal.
That's fantastic.
So we're in the process of it now and we'll let you all know how it goes.
Absolutely, you know, uh Friends of the Tug.
That's where we got the idea from.
Pete Runyon, my buddy Pete, they've pulled over five thousand tires out of the Tug Fork and just right around Williamson, South Williamson area. That's, that's just hard to believe, but when you go down the La Viza Fork, it's just as bad. And we really, uh you know, any help that we could get in terms of a, a grant to help clean that up would be fantastic, so.
We'll let you know how it goes.
And we'll work, be happy to work with you. If you need help, we've got Sharon Hall, I'm sure can help with that. And we've got Eric Ratliff, who's the Executive Director of the Big Cindy Area Development District. And I'm sure that they'll be happy to help with it as well if you, if you need any help with it, so. All right, so the next item is we need to acknowledge the financials report for the Pike County Conservation District ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to acknowledge? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
The only thing I wanted to leave you all with, anytime that you all want to come to a meeting, uh they're open to the public. We'd be happy to have you all. If you have ideas that you'd like to discuss with us on things we can work on, as long as it falls within the nature of what the Kentucky Association Conservation District or the NRCS says is a program we can spend money on, we'd be happy to help.
We appreciate that.
They're the second Tuesday of every month and they usually start at six o'clock. You're all welcome to join anytime.
Thank you, sir. Brian, thank you so much. All right, next item is acknowledgement of receipt of the Pike County Sheriff's Settlement for twenty twenty for gas and oil taxes. For the period ending May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, Frankie reviewed the audit, I think everything's in order. Is there a motion to acknowledge?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the authorization to set a salary rate for Mountain Water District Board members pursuant to KRS seventy-four oh two oh, sub-paragraph six. Newly appointed commissioners receive three hundred per month until they complete their initial twelve hours of training. Then they receive five hundred a month, six thousand annually. Is there a motion to authorize this salary rate as allowed by KRS Chapter seventy-four?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Um there is an appointment available on the Pike County Cooperative Extension District Board. It would be my motion to appoint um Scott Sykes. Um he's one of the names that was uh submitted to us to fill the vacancy left with the passing of Jack Charles. His term ends on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is authorization to apply for the twenty twenty-three litter abatement program grant and approval to execute all documents related to such grant. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is authorization to apply for the twenty twenty-three illegal opened up cleanup grant and approval to execute all documents related to the grant. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of resolution acknowledging that the Pike County Fiscal Court will be responsible for any cost overruns associated with the completion of the Pikeville Senior Citizens Building. Eric, we talked about this once before. Um is there a motion to adopt a resolution to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Uh next item is a second reading of your proposed ordinance amending the Pike County Administrative Code relating to the Pike County Library Board. This is in regard to Senator Feeler's, Philip Wheeler's Senate Bill one sixty-seven. Uh Roy, you made some additions to this since the last, was there any changes to this after the first reading?
No, Judge, there's not, not, been no changes. You and I had had a conversation about a phone call that I received from Council for the Library Board suggesting that we add uh section one seventy-three point four nine zero to our proposed ordinance. Uh and what that would do is four eighty takes care of your initial appointments. Four ninety takes care of if some, if you have an appointment that comes up because somebody steps down, dies, whatever happens. Uh so there's two separate sections. And they had suggested that we add that, uh that's up to the court's discretion, I think.
What I would make is an oral motion to amend this to state pursuant to KRS one seventy-three four eighty and one seventy-three four ninety, is that correct?
Yes, Judge.
And that this be passed over and be given another reading and re-advertized with that change?
Yes.
So if you would, just we'll give it another first reading, so that way there's no question about it. If there's any objection to that? That way we can re-advertize it with this change and then it'll be in order after we advertise it for the next meeting.
Okay.
So if you'll proceed with the first reading of the amended um.
Okay. All right, basically what we're going to do under section one ninety, under Boards and Commissions established by the Court Pike County Library Board, we are going to strike out the language that currently says the state library nominates two names for each term with, and the judge executive selects one of the two. That is being stricken. The language that is going to be added, appointments to the library board shall be made pursuant to KRS one seven-three point eight zero and one seven-three point four nine zero.
Okay. Uh that will be in order for action at the next meeting after it's re-advertized, thank you, sir. Next item is the approval to execute an agreement for independent maintenance uh for contractor with Terry Rogers for twelve hundred fifty a month for the Pike County Courthouse and Detention Center. Um is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any other question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is approval to execute a maintenance agreement with Resurrection Coal. Um Mr. Little, would you like to come up and discuss this real quick?
Judges was uh brought up because when they'd started hauling coal over back into Miller Creek, there was uh some road issues. That road was not in the best condition before they started hauling, so with the uh added traffic and the weight of the trucks, we did go to Resurrection Coal and asked them if they would pay for the materials that we would uh provide the labor to uh blacktop that road. And this agreement is that they have uh agreed to do that.
So they've agreed to pay forty-two thousand six hundred dollars toward five hundred thirty-two tons of asphalt to meet uh made in uh six equal installments, is that correct?
It is correct.
I didn't see in the agreement, does it say when the installments, let's see here? Does it say when the installments are due, I didn't see that in here.
I don't think that there was a deadline of the, but the, for the last installment.
Uh we need to probably, Roy, if you could get with Charles Baird on this. Uh Mr. Baird's their attorney. Unless, you know, six equal installments, we need a timeframe specified as to when those payments will be made. Can you give him a call this week, Roy? All right, so.
Monthly would be great for us.
Well, I mean, that's, that's. A-annual installments would not be.
No.
Uh would the court mind passing over this to we can talk to Mr. Baird about it? We'll pass over that one. All right, Mr. Fan, do you have anything, sir?
We had a bid opening on August tenth on bid number three eight dash two zero two two four one, two thousand twenty-two newer cargo van. Uh this is a van we've been trying to find for uh the Public Works Department for quite some time. We finally stumbled up on one that worked. Uh we, uh one bid was received, it was from Burgland Ford in Salem, Virginia. Uh total delivered cost of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. The vehicle meets all the specifications that were in the bid package, was included being a long wheelbase, high-top cargo van. Uh it's my recommendation that we award the bid to Burgland Ford for a bid price of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and authorize the treasurer write a check for payment.
Is there a motion to award bid number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two for this van to Burgland Ford and authorization for the treasurer issue payment for forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second?
Greg, is this a cargo van or is this a window van?
It's a cargo van.
So it don't have any windows in it, right?
No.
Okay, I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Robertson, any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes.
We had a bid opening on August fifteenth on bid number three nine dash two zero two two four five, two thousand twenty-two newer double cab or crew cab trucks. We received zero bids. Uh according to KRS statute forty-five A three seventy-five, uh whereafter an invitation for bid has been made in accordance with KRS forty-five A three sixty-five and no bids have been received from responsible, responsible bidders, the local public agency may proceed to acquire the supplies, services or construction by non-competitive negotiation in accordance with KRS forty-five A three eighty. I think uh this court in the past, uh as we were trying to look for some other trucks, kind of authorized me to, as I found them, do a non-competitive negotiation and buy them. I know we're still in, you know, uh dire need for trucks like we've been, seems like for the last year or so. Uh like in the past, sometimes a truck will show up by the time I do a bid package, bring it to court, you know, that truck's already been sold. So if that's something the court would be interested in doing, I'll, I'll, I could pursue that. And we, we probably need to get a specific number. I know we've bought a couple of trucks anyway, uh you know, since this bid package was rolled and we probably need to get an exact number of trucks that we're needing right now.
Need four more, Fabi?
Well, it's like I said, they're hard to find.
Solid waste needs one? Okay.
What we just bought?
There were those trucks in South Carolina that would be available the middle of October. I haven't talked to them since, there's not, there may not be any of them left now. Also, I've got a um, uh email from uh Bachman Chevrolet, who is the state, who has the state contract for Chevrolet. And uh they sent me a list of their allocations uh for the trucks they're going to be able to get. Uh they're going to be able to order, they're two thousand twenty-three models. Uh he couldn't tell me if I ordered them exactly when I would get them, but I'm, I will follow up with him. But they are twenty-three models, state contract price.
I agree, let him look, see what he can find. See what you can find.
If I can find them, go ahead and buy them and authorize the treasurer to write a check to pay for them.
Well, we need to have specific commands, we can always have a special. How do we need to do that, Frank?
Probably have to have a special.
Try to, standing order not to exceed. About fifty-five thousand a feet.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion for a standing order by five, uh, trucks up to. What?
Not to exceed four hundred thousand?
Three hundred would be enough.
Not to exceed, uh, three hundred thousand.
Yes, I think, uh, I think, uh, most of the trucks we've bought recently have been in the, in the mid to upper fifties. Uh, so I think, think three hundred for four should cover it. I mean, three hundred for five.
We can always come back and change the standing order and even find the trucks. So that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
In our last court meeting, uh, we approved a bid for rearload dumpsters. We awarded the bid to Amerikan. I didn't write that bid package for a specific amount of dumpsters because the two companies that were bidding, uh, they had different quantities designated as a truckload because they use different sized trailers. We wanted to take full advantage of the freight charge and get a full trailer. So now I'm coming back to the court with a, a rugged steelworks pricing with a complete trailer load. I have, um, uh, discussed this with Chuck and Stephanie and kind of put an order together. Uh, there's some of these that, uh, we're completely out of. There's some of them that we're real low on and there are also some others that we're probably going to have to take out of service soon. Uh, this, this also adds for some extra lids and hardware on, on some of the older boxes that we have that were short lids and hardware. Um, so for this order for a full truckload, including freight, would be seventy-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars if the court would like to, to make that purchase. This, these are revenue generators.
I'll make a motion to buy, um, these dumpsters for seventy-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars because they do generate revenue for the solid waste program. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Something else I need to bring this court up to date on, um, it, it has to do with our, our ten Mack trucks that we get annually. Talked to Scott, Scott Picard at Worldwide Equipment just a couple of days ago and he told me, of course, our auction is September twentieth. I think, uh, we try to get the trucks down there a week to ten days before the auction so they can do the cleaning and whatever, get them ready to run through. And I think we're planning on taking our trucks down there September, leaving September eighth. Uh, I was told that all our dump trucks will be here, uh, by the end of this month. On our roll-offs, two of them will be here the first part of next month. We have an issue with one of the roll-offs. It sustained some damage to the cab and they're going to send that truck back to the factory to have a new cab put on it. Um, the problem it creates is we may not see that truck till the middle or end of October and there's no guarantees that we'll see it by then. So at this point, we've got a couple of options. We can either try to go a month and a half, two, two and a half months with just two roll-off trucks. Or we can just send nine trucks to the auction and keep one of the roll-off trucks for another year. I know there's been discussion, uh, in the last couple of years about adding a fourth roll-off truck. We really don't have a good backup roll-off truck. Uh, this would kind of complete the fleet for the solid waste system. This is a truck, um, that empties our open tops, which is a revenue generator for, uh, the solid waste department and, and, and this additional truck would, would, would help them complete the fleet.
What, we have to put a new cab on it?
Yeah, they, they had to, uh, they had to send it back to the factory to sell it as a new vehicle. They had to send it back to the factory, um, you know, to put a new cab in. Now, now something else, uh, I got to looking at, after looking at what these trucks brought at the spring auction, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable in saying that we'll get enough money out of these nine trucks at the auction to pay for the team.
But you don't have a backup roll-off truck right now.
I think we've been needing one.
So let's just. I'll make a motion that we take, uh, two of the roll-offs and seven of the, um, macks to Alabama Auction, that we retain the, uh, roll-off that's in the best condition as a backup for the solid waste, uh, system until we get the, uh, third truck in. The one that's been sent back to the factory. Is there a second with that?
Second, but I was just wondering what.
Evidently during transportation, you know, they, they send us to the company to put the, uh, uh, to put the roll-off equipment on it evidently was done sometime from the time it left the factory until it got to the place where they put the, uh, roll-off equipment on it.
Might have hit a bridge.
They have. But evidently it was significant, significant enough damage to where they had to send it back to the factory to replace the cab to be able to sell it as a new truck.
Yeah.
Um, so motion second. Uh, any other question on that? Other roll, please.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
That's all I have, Judge, thank you.
Have we heard anything about the radios for the Sheriff Department yet?
Uh, we have, um, I, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, this court approved up to a certain amount, um, in either our last or the meeting before that. And, uh, I actually had some more discussion with Motorola Solutions and, uh, they gave us an extra eighty-four hundred dollars off of that order, so we should be good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Little, uh, Road Department, can you give us a quick update on our flood recovery? And while you're doing that, is there a motion to approve the completed work orders and scheduled work orders for the Road Department?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Judge, since, uh, the last time that we ran the court report for the Road Department, we have, uh, we've put on, uh, three hundred and forty-eight, uh, new work orders. We still have a hundred and forty-eight open work orders and, uh, we've completed two hundred work orders. Out of those numbers, there was two hundred and ninety-one of those work orders were emergency work orders that came through from the flooding. So anyway, we've done, the Road Department has done a tremendous amount of work and since this flood has happened, uh, we, these guys are still working. I can't brag on this crew enough, on, on all the Road Department enough. I mean, they, they've hung in, uh, put in some tough hours, long hours and we're still continue to, we're still working ten hours a day. We have went probably, we're going to work probably every other Saturday now, uh, to just give everybody a break. Um, the, uh, we're just like, we're getting to the point where we can start focusing on some temporary fix, I mean, quit the temporary fixes and start the permanent fix. Bo Adams will be in Monday to start, uh, some of the poly bags. We have several breaks that are large enough and, uh, that we would need the poly bag systems instead of the rail and cribbing. Though the rail and cribbing, those jobs will take just a little bit longer because, uh, we do have to, uh, uh, have the, uh, the core drill, have those core drilled to make sure that we can hit rock. But basically, I mean, what, we're, we're working and, and, you know, it's going pretty good. It is, we still have, we still have a lot of work to do. We're still going to be doing work months from now on, on this, but it's all, overall, we're doing, we're doing very well. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or anything from the commissioners? All right, Treasurer's business, Mr. Stacy.
Authorize the following inter-fund transfers for July twenty twenty-two. To transfer three hundred thousand from the general fund to the jail fund, to transfer five hundred thousand from the general fund to the LGEA fund, and to transfer three hundred thousand from the road fund to the maintenance garage fund, and to transfer three hundred thousand from the solid waste fund to the maintenance garage fund.
Is there a motion to authorize the transfers as described by Mr. Stacy? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Authorize a check from the solid waste bank account to the consolidated bank account to cover their transfer in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a motion to authorize a check from solid waste to the consolidated account in the amount of three hundred thousand?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Uh, any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Frankie, is that for the purchase of the excavator and some of the?
The, basically the maintenance garage fund is funded from the road and solid waste funds?
I just was trying to figure out why it was going to consolidate it.
Well, that's the bank account that the maintenance garage fund is in.
I, I'm just, I was just curious because I know we bought an excavator. It was on the bill list for, I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that was part of it.
No.
Okay.
No, that's going to come directly out of solid waste.
All right. Go ahead.
Authorize payment of this expenditure approval list dated August twenty-third, plus any other utility bills received before checks are run.
Is there a motion to authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, plus any other utility bills before checks are run? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions or discussion seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerks' twenty-five fifty reports for July twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerks' twenty-five fifty reports for July twenty twenty-two?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's monthly financial statement ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the clerk, I'm sorry, the, uh, Treasurer's financial statement for the month ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two? A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Any other questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
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 Authorize a standing order for checks to Rhonda Taylor, Pike County Clerk, for drawdown requests from the county clerk's record storage fund. This is a pass-through money that comes from her office that we have to account for and then she requests the money and then we write the check back. Uh, it's a new fund, uh, created by the last legislative, uh, session.
Is there a motion to authorize a standing order for checks to the county clerk for drawdown requests from the clerk's record storage fund? Motion by Commissioner Booth, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
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 Authorize checks for lodging registration expenses for any employee who needs to attend the twenty-first annual KCJEA Fall Retreat, September twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth at the Spring Hill Suite Marriott Inn in Lexington, uh, in Elizabeth Town, Kentucky.
Is there a motion to authorize as described by the Treasurer?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any other questions or discussions seen, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Last thing I have would be to authorize a check to Jimmy Kaiser in the amount of four thousand dollars for lodging and expenses to take the nine trucks back to auction in Montgomery, Alabama.
Is there a motion to authorize, uh, a check for four thousand dollars to Jimmy Kaiser for lodging expenses to take the truck back, trucks back to Montgomery, Alabama?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Robertson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Frankie, I need you to do me a favor if you, if you would. There's been a lot of purchases, radios, dumpsters, trucks. We spent a lot of money out of, uh, on the storm so far. I need you, uh, by the first of the week to give me an idea of after all these bills are paid, what our account balances are going to look like. And a projection of what revenue we have coming in. We should have about two million coming in or so from, uh, have we, we haven't got our road fund money yet, have we?
It did, county road aid.
Has it come in already?
Yes, it came in last week. Uh, we haven't drawn down the money from ARPA account. All the money we paid up June and July for the fire departments, the turnout year and the building improvements.
That's what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, what, you know, what we actually are looking at in terms of our bank account balances. Because we've committed some of the money from ARPA to the Mountain Water District. Uh, we've committed some of it to the fire department, so we need an idea of what the actual balance is on that. Um, because the reason I, I mentioned the road aid money, I guess it, I'm sorry, I, I was looking at the July financial statement. It's obviously was not reflected on the Ju- July.
It was out at late last week.
So I, that's what I'm trying to get an idea. Before the next monthly financial statement, if you can just get me an idea of where we are because, you know, uh, there has been, we're going to have to really start looking at the spending. Uh, we've had to make a lot of purchases on trucks and equipment. We've been out of pocket a ton of money for, uh, this flood. Um, and we're going to have to take, you know, make sure that we're not digging a hole that we're going to have trouble getting out of next year. I mean, I want to, I want an idea and then some, some type of projection about October before we get the next coal mineral severance and the next occupational net profits correct. So, I mean, um, and then you'll have some solid waste bills coming in, uh,
October.
In October, but you don't have a lot of big ticket, uh, dollars coming in.
Not till property tax.
Uh, and that's what Jan-, basically December, January. So we're going to have to be real careful here, guys, about, in my opinion, about how we're, you know, that was one of the reservations I had about the voting machines. It's another quarter million dollars and, you know, who, don't know if we're going to get reimbursed anything on it or not. So I just think that that's something that we're going to have to be really careful about going forward because there's been a lot of, a lot of things that have been purchased that are not on the capital plan that I know we needed, but I'm, I'm concerned about what it's going to do financially as we move forward. Uh, hopefully this special session, that the legislature is going to freeze some money up, uh, to help us defray some of the costs for drains and fuel and overtime and, and some of those things. But I think it's fair to say, Fabian, we spent a massive amount of money on the Road Department in the last, uh, four weeks.
The last payroll, the last payroll was a hundred fifty thousand dollar higher than it posted for the payroll.
So we're going to have to be really careful. Yeah, I mean, this is not the, this fiscal year, you know, we've already had, you know, we start the fiscal year off the first month of the fiscal year with a major flood event, and that's going to have an impact. So let's hope the legislature, but you know, I'm going to be pretty much against any other spending until we have a better idea of where we are financially going forward. So I just, you know, that's my concern, and I'm sure the Commissioners share the same, same concern. But can you get me some projections next week about what we're looking at? And I'd like to have a little, a projection up to the end of this calendar year because obviously in the spring, you're going to get your occup, you're going to get your first quarter of your solid waste, and you're going to have your property tax coming in. You know, we've got the county in good financial shape, but it doesn't take long to burn through that money at the rate we're going, so... Jamie, we have in here a memorandum of agreement for the Tug Valley Pike County Tributaries Non-structural Flood Control Project. Are we passing over that today? Yeah, it's not. Go ahead, Roy.
Judge, I was going to bring that up under my section.
We'll just pass over it for now, then we'll come back to it.
Okay.
We have a need for executive session. All right, Colonel Downey, would you please instruct the public and the court on the relevant provisions? The Kentucky Open Meeting Laws pertains to the entry into executive session by fiscal court for purposes discussing specific personnel matters and for discussing pending or potential litigation.
I would be extremely happy to do that, Judge. According to KRS sixty-one point eight one zero, the fiscal court is allowed to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss proposed or pending litigation and under paragraph F to discuss specific personnel matters. Thank you.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session? Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any questions or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Be in recess for executive session. We'll return to call the chair. To adjourn from executive session, motion by somebody. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to amend the court order from August ninth to state that Rachel Murphy's hire date is July twenty-sixth, twenty-two, to accept the resignation of James Joyce effective eight twenty-three twenty-two, to hire Robert Kendrick as a weed mower at Road Lot H at a three-H rate of pay effective eight twenty-four twenty-two, to accept Stephen Coles resignation eight six twenty-two, to accept Clyde Ratliff's resignation effective eight twelve twenty-two, and to give the truck drivers taking the vehicles to the Alabama Auction one comp day to make up for that trip. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Colonel Downey, we have this memorandum of the agreement. Give me a thirty-second explanation. I understand it, but fifteen would be preferable.
All right. Kevin and I have both reviewed this. The memorandum basically says that the federal government is going to go in and get this land, and they're going to take it. Well, there might be a question about a title on a piece of parcel. Instead of delaying the whole project, what they're going to do is they're going to send you a letter and say, hey, we got a problem with this one. What do you, you know, we think, do it this way. What do you think?
Motion to approve the agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. I don't have that copy. I'll get, Jamie will get it to me. All right. The only department supervisor that I really want to bring up is Nate. Nate, you want to just give us some quick numbers on the number of claims that we've had and number of bridges and structures damaged so far?
Yes, sir. Those numbers that I wasn't able to get all those numbers, Judge, but as of the twenty-first, we had three hundred and seventy-nine homeowners and renters that were approved for one point eight million dollars in federal grants through FEMA Individual and Household Program. This also includes a million and a half in housing assistance, home repairs and replacement, and rental assistance. So there's been a hundred and fifty-nine homeowners and renters that have been approved for rental assistance. And as of the twenty-first, there was also five that still had to provide more documentation on their insurance. We do have two teams out today that are doing bridge and private bridge and culvert inspections from U.S. Department of Transportation, Corps of Engineers, and FEMA.
All right. Thank you, sir. How's everything going? Everything seems to be going pretty smooth on our end.
Yes, sir.
All right.
So far, so good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Judge Chickman, anything? Crawled down anything else? Commissioner Tackett, you have anything?
Judge, you know, I just want to thank your guys. They've been working real hard last, I guess tomorrow might be four weeks. I just want to thank them, all departments, you know, what they've done. I'm like some of the rest of the people in Pike County and I guess other counties too. I'm not completely satisfied with the FEMA help our people's getting. All we can do is just keep talking and, as they say, appeal and call this number, you know. It just, I just, you know, pray for them and and just continue to do what we can do as county officials to help where we can and just keep moving forward. That's about all, Judge. You know, they're just, they're still having some tough times out there. Just keep in the prayers and keep trying to move forward and dig out of this. But I do know Pike County people's strong, and they will be back, and it's just going to take some time, you know, with roads. I think the state's picking up a lot of this debris with these boom trucks. And, you know, I see them here and there, and it's going to take time. It's just, it come overnight, and it's going to take time to fix it all back. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
I just want to thank our workers on the solid, I mean, on the Road Department. I know they've worked their butt off. Spent a whole lot of extra hours out there trying to get the roads fixed back and everything. I just ask the other people in the county to be patient with us, be patient with... I know we've got potholes and things like that that needs to be fixed, but you know, we've got to try to take care of the, our friends and our neighbors that went through the flood and stuff and try to get them where they can get in and out. So I'm just asking you to be patient with us. We're really behind, so thank you.
Commissioner Booth, anything?
Judge, I just want to thank all of our employees, you know, from the Road Department all the way down nine-one-one. Nine-one-one's done outstanding job during this disaster. You know, just, I know a lot of people still hurting, and hopefully we can get the roads back together before long. But most of all, I just want to thank all of our employees that works within the county and our, so our first responders, you know, they've done a lot out there helping this flood. But I'll have, Judge.
Thank you. Any other business come before the fiscal court? If not, before we entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to ask Gary Sloan if he would say the benediction for us.
Amen.
Your motion to adjourn, motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett? Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.